Welcome. Today is August 25th, the regular scheduled board meeting of the North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale School District. I'm Teresa Oje, the Chair. I have an announcement. Immediately following our board meeting this evening, the board will convene to strategize for negotiations right after the meeting. We're going to call the meeting to order and have the Pledge of Allegiance as our first item.
Madam Chair, in a few minutes Superintendent, Superintendent? Dr. Miller, I keep saying Dr. Miller, is going to introduce us to the new Assistant Principal at Maplewood. But he brought his wife and daughter with him this evening, and so I've asked Molly Melzness and her daughter Lucy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Please forgive Lucy, she hasn't learned all the words yet.[133.16][133.16](Laughter). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Colleague, please note that Director Anderson will be arriving shortly. The first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. I'm looking for a motion and a second to do that. Move by Navy?
Second.
Second by Yenner. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Our next item is public comment. Kim, have you received anything this evening?
I just received this evening.
Okay, thank you. The next item is our consent agenda, and the items on the consent agenda consist of minutes of our July 21st work-study session, minutes of the July 28th mini-board retreat, minutes of August 18th special meeting, minutes of the August 18th work-study session, and routine personnel items. Is there any item that a board member would like pulled?
I believe that disbursements were also on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much for pointing out. We do have several board reports, including the disbursements, investments, and wire transfers. Thank you.
So moved.
Move by Livingston?
Second.
Second by Yenner. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've done that. Dr. Miller, would you lead us in some introduction here?
Yes, it is my pleasure. I am going to introduce our new Assistant Principal, Eric Melzness, in a minute, but before I do that, I just want to talk a little bit about our process. Our hiring process in this district, we're known for having a very rigorous process. A lot of people are involved, and we had over 100 applicants again, and Eric just did a fantastic job. And I just want to thank HR, there's a large committee, interviews were taking place at Maplewood, there was like 10, 12 staff involved, teachers involved, second interviews up here, HR, a variety of just rigorous components to this process, over 100 applicants, and Eric just did a fantastic job. He rose to the top, he is a rock star, we're so excited to have him here in our district. A little bit about Eric, he's here again with his wife Molly and his daughter Lucy, so we welcomed them, it was great getting to meet them this evening. Eric has just a lot of things that he brings to the table here. First of all, he's an instructional leader, he's very passionate about the work, he's led a lot of work in the things that we're passionate about in our district, the equity leadership. Most recently was the Assistant Principal in Maple Grove High School, and before that he was an Assistant Principal in St. Paul, and he was previous to that, a social studies teacher, so he's got a great background, he's done a lot of excellent work. He's passionate about students, building relationships, he has a great background in PLC work and leading that, those initiatives, so we're just really excited to have him here, to bring him on and join the great team at Maplewood. And with that, I'd like to just introduce to you Eric.
Good evening Chair Oje, board members, Superintendent Osorio, and Cabinet. Thanks for your help on that, Kim. I appreciate that. And Troy, I agree, that was a rigorous process.[381.41][381.41](Laughter). I really want to say thanks for the opportunity to join District 622 and Maplewood Middle School. I'm truly honored and excited to serve our students, our parents, our staff, and our community. It's the community that my mom grew up in, it's the community that my grandparents still live in, and I'm just so looking forward to our journey together and working with the all. So thanks so much, I'm so happy to be here. Thanks a lot.[410.12][410.12](Applause).
Thank you, Eric, and we too wish you a successful first year. And now you guys can scoot in, go enjoy the rest of the evening.[421.81][421.81](Laughter). We'll move into our report section, which Christine will lead us off in a recap there of our retreat and some other items.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public, I'm really happy tonight to report on a couple of items. The first was our board mini-retreat, which took place on July 28th. Our board gathered together for an evening of professional development and planning together. The evening began with a session led by Dennis Cheesebro of a group called TeamWorks, and during this portion, the board really engaged in some professional development on board governance. So what does board governance look like? How do we work together? We discussed educational leadership system, and we learned about ways to increase efficiency and communication. Our board members also joined together in an activity using the book Strengths Finder. This book, if you've ever seen it before, allows you to begin with a quiz that helps really assess the personal strengths that you have, and talk about how you might bring those strengths to a team and to a workplace environment, and so that we can really work together to learn how to leverage the talents that we have among us on our team. So we spent a little bit of time exploring our individual strengths to try to build some teamwork among us, and also again, how to maximize our group efficacy as well. After that, we had a discussion on future plans for board professional development. We looked at what are some areas that we'd like to continue working on through the coming year together. There definitely was some interest in more conversation around board governance and areas that we can maximize some of the resources that might already be available to us throughout regional associations nearby as well. Finally, we had a short discussion on ideas for improving my new superintendent evaluation, and so that conversation led into some exploration of a model that's been put together by MSBA and MASSA to look at a model that's being adopted around the state for a different form of superintendent evaluation. So we had some discussion about that. And then finally, our group got together to just discuss some communication strategies for levy planning. Again, this was back in July still, so we were at that time just brainstorming some of those next steps around levy planning, and how do we put out the most comprehensive and concrete details and facts about what the impact of a levy vote would mean for our community. So we had that conversation as well. I found it to be a really productive evening. It was my first time working with the board in a session like that, and I really found it, everyone to be truly, truly engaged and looking forward, so that was pretty exciting.
And Christine, I think you have another item you wanted to report on?
Thank you, yes, I do, I also have an update. Thank you Keith, we have a couple of slides that go along with our levy update. As you know, our board has voted to put two questions on the ballot for this coming November 3rd, and we have, finally, as of yesterday, got a district website up and running, a link from our homepage for levy information. We've put together some initial facts for people to get information. We're also putting up a tax calculator, so families can log in and take a look at what the impact of the tax might be for their own home value. And just information about the two questions that we have on the ballot. As you know, we have two questions. The first one is for an operating referendum that would replace our current operating referendum with another one that increases the per pupil dollar amount by $900, and I believe that might be a couple of the facts. I won't read you this slide about the top 10 operating levy facts, but you'll find all of this coming up on our district website very shortly. This particular document is still under some final revisions, but what it will tell you is a lot of detailed information about what this operating levy is all about. We're going to be looking at ways that we can maintain workable class sizes, some ways that we can provide more interventions for students with different needs in the classroom, and accelerate opportunities for students to participate in college and career experiences in high school. We have a second question that's on the ballot, that's actually going to be a tech levy, so we're going to be talking about a $3 million tech levy, and as you know, the money for that tech levy is going to be directed toward real basic upgrades to our Wi-Fi, our bandwidth, security systems, so security cameras, NPA systems, as well as infrastructure and devices for students. So you're going to be looking for a lot of information on our website about that, and if you want to, Keith, go to the next slide that comes with this. Part of what we've been busy doing right now, it's really important as a school districts that's going out to put a levy, two levy questions on the ballot, that we are very clear in our communication. Is there a way to zoom that out a little bit maybe? Or even slide it to the, a little bit, so that we can see? This particular graphic is one that you'll probably see quite a bit coming up. It actually outlines current levy, operating levies for the largest metro school districts, the 20 largest metro school districts, and the different operating levies that school districts have out there right now. And so as you can see, District 622 is at the bottom of that list, so we have the lowest operating referendum per student, and our goal in asking for revoke and replace of our current operating levy is actually so that we can bring that amount up, so that we're in the, basically the middle of the pack. We're really looking to make sure that we give our students in District 622 the opportunities that our neighboring school districts have, and other students around the metro area. So, most important for this update is that there's a lot of new communication coming out. Also, I'll be participating, I think I'm now up to about 22 scheduled presentations regarding the operating levy, coming up over the next eight to 10 weeks. So you'll see me at a lot of different school sites and different organizations, we'll have those as posted as well, but lots of opportunities for people to hear informational presentations about this levy and the two questions that are going to be on the ballot.
Great. Questions or comments by the board? One, Christine, if somebody was watching this and wanted to call, are we directing the calls to anyone in particular, or anybody's office in particular? Do, is that something Randy, your department's taking on?
At this point, the calls are coming directly to my office for dispersment, depending on which kind of questions they are. They're all coming into my office directly. I am personally reviewing each and every question that also comes in off of our website. So our website has a link where people can post questions about the referendum, and I am personally reviewing those questions each and every day to make sure that we have responses to people in a very short turnaround, 24 to 48 hours of response to everybody that puts in a question on that website. But for right now, those questions are coming right into the superintendent's office.
Great. Okay. Nancy?
Yeah, just to comment along that line, as you know, you just can't assume that people, especially maybe new young parents, understand what this is all about. And so I think we have to be very, you know, what? Patient with people and really, and not use acronyms and high-blown education ease, but just really explain it in a really, you know, concrete way, so that people can understand what we're trying to do and what their personal, what the impact would be on their personal finances.
Duly noted, thank you for sharing that. In fact, the presentation that will be going out, it hasn't started yet, but when I do start doing those presentations around town, we've already started putting, it's really mostly drafted already, and it begins with some very basic, what is a levy referendum and why do we have them? So duly noted, we're going to start with some really basics, because I think a lot of us have questions about school funding, and how has this come about, and why do school districts have levies when perhaps we didn't have them in previous generations? And that doesn't always resonate for everybody, why we have a change in the way schools are funded now. So all of that will be part of the communication presentation that will be coming about.
All right, thank you. Did you have a third slide you wanted to show, or at this time, the staff one?
Oh, yes, we also have, thank you, I appreciate that. We also have a third slide. Part of what we've been doing in our back-to-school work is really talking with our District 622 personnel about guidelines for how we can talk about levy referendums. So it's, we've been very clear in communicating with staff that our job as district personnel is to share information only. We're allowed to provide factual updates and information about the levy, but we've been providing a lot of guidance to our own employees to be sure that while anybody is allowed to get involved on their personal time with a vote yes or a vote no campaign, they certainly have every right to do so, but not on district time. So people are reminded that they need to use their own personal emails after hours for any kind of communication in that regard, and that information that happens on school time is simply informational, and so we've provided guidelines to our own staff about that as well. So that was the third piece that's in here. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into our school board section, it's a 916 brief section, but you know, we often talk about some of the programming. Well, tonight, you're going to hear two items, one of which will be with regards to the Lake Elmo K-8 school, and if you want to go ahead and turn that on, Keith, we'll show to our viewing public here that this school, unlike the Carner Blue school, will be focused on the arts. It's going to have arts as its main foundation for both curriculum and environment. The Carner Blue is more of an environmental one, where they have the prairie and they have forest and all that. So if you scroll into the next one, just some highlights about the philosophy for the arts focus. They're using all terminology related to arts, so you can see the items listed here. The one thing that they have done is after now a year of Carner Blue of assessing, they have taken all of the great stuff that has worked there, the successes, and they have implemented them in the planning of this particular school. If you go to the next one, they have decided the name. This is a made-up name, it's based off of Greek. It is called Pancola, and it means all compute, all complete beauty. So they want every student to kind of relish in this arts theme. Their byline is empowering students through creativity. So that is their mission. This will be a school that is more likely to see 622 students that are enrolled in some of our 916 programs than Carner Blue was, just because of geographic location. So I wanted to give you that update. And then I'm going to just mention another very unique collaboration. We are one of the districts that is working with 916 in a new program, and it allows our staff to gain some education with free credits or some covered grant. A grant has covered some of the cost of students that are learning to be special ed teachers, and Keith is actually going to talk about it because they're working with our HR department. So Keith, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk just briefly about that.
Yeah, well, about, I think it's about two years now, 916 came to District 622 and said, "We're wanting to start an alternate pathway to licensure for EBD teachers, self-contained EBD teachers," and we wondered if you guys would be interested. And what they were really looking at from a 916 perspective was, they had a fair, what they call education assistance, people who don't have a license in their classrooms but may have a bachelor's degree, and whether they would have an interest in becoming teachers. So they started looking at their group, and they had a fair number of staff who were interested in that, so they came to us, and we started surveying our staff, and we had, initially, we had about five staff who were really interested in, who had bachelor's degrees, but were interested in doing this graduate study. So 916 went to the University of Minnesota and found a really energetic leader from that program, her name is Jennifer McComas, and she started to pursue working together with 916 to create this program. And why it's innovative is, part of the program is actually completed while you're working, so your, some of your projects are in your cla, in the classroom in which you're working. So both the district and 916, excuse me, started to interview people, and they wanted to really find people who were committed and who had some talent, at least from people's observation, to be able to do this work. So they started to try to get this program approved through the state. It took quite a while, we originally thought we were going to be underway about a half a year to a year ahead of time of what we are now, but it took a while to get that program approved. It finally was approved, and this past year, they completed one year of study, and then this spring, those, that group of people will actually graduate. We had 23 start, we still have 23 involved, that's a plus. But as we ended up with this first year completed, the same individual who sort of spearheaded the program from University of Minnesota wrote another grant that reimbursed students for not only the tuition, but expenses, and also allows them the opportunity to do student teaching and get some money on top of that. So it's really been a fantastic economic situation. When we started the program, they were, they were told they could, if, after, you know, five years working in this particular field, you could get 17, I think 17,500 reimbursed. So it really, that was a big plus to get started. But it's just kind of one of the first programs, I think, in the state in terms of doing some of this licensure, alternate pathway to licensure, and they're hoping to expand it into, you know, to create another cohort and move forward. We actually ended up with two people who hung into the process and are also going to be completing this fall, so two people from District 622 out of the 23. And the partnership is between 916, 917, Minneapolis Mounds View, and of course us. Any questions?
Yeah. Any questions on either topic? Nancy?
Sure. So Keith, the program is Pancolo, is that right?
That's the new school.
That's the new school. So the Pancolo program, is this for EBD students?
No, that's...
That'll be the new K-8 facility in Lake Elmo, that's going to be mirrored after Carner Blue, the new one.
So who goes there?
That will, that is a special education school, and they'll be similar to what Carner Blue has, and I'll have Corey answer specific what types of student, what programs or types of students can go there.
Primarily, they're going to serve students with autism spectrum disorders and/or emotional behavioral disorders. Those will be probably the largest groups that will be served, and then there'll be some shuffling of, you know, their, excuse me, the Carner Blue location's up in Blaine, so that's a challenge for some of the districts like with us or South Washington County, that's a long bus ride, so trying to shorten up some of the travel, and those are demanding rides for students with a lot of challenges. So there'll be some shuffling of location of programs and things like that, and expansion based on their enrollment growth.
Okay. And when that school, oh, go ahead.
So can you give us like a 10,000-foot view of what the compassionate school model is?
Well, I think Teresa touched on it a little bit earlier, like at Carner Blue, they use the theme of the environment as the backdrop for their instruction. They're still doing very specific targeted instruction for, you know, specific disability issues, but trying to tie it to a theme. So, you know, the theme here is more about the arts than the environment piece, so they use a number of other models, whether it's Nurtured Heart, whether it's other similar programs, that is sort of a curriculum-based approach. Another common one is Life Space Crisis Intervention, so it's an actual practice or strategies that they embed in the curriculum that works with students that may have challenging behaviors. So I think they use a compassionate moniker as a way to capture all the different strategies that are going to be embedded in the curriculum.
And the physical resemblance is not your typical classroom, and so when the school is finished, we'll receive an invitation, and I really encourage you to take advantage and take a tour, because it's quite a unique way, very innovative in how they can be successful at adapting education for these types of students.
And I'd like to add to Keith's piece, because that, this program's pretty important. These are usually for positions that are very hard to fill, so we are really trying to grow our own, honestly, and try to retain, attract and retain really good talent. So when we see that potential talent in a paraprofessional or someone of that caliber, and we see that potential there, we want to get them engaged in a program, because these are often hard to fill. We have, you know, limited applicants because of the nature of the work.
And because of this new and exciting thing, and it, Connie is working to actually have this be one of the subtopics that could be presented at MSBA, as, you know, a class that you could attend later in the day, so it's pretty exciting, so Nancy.
Well, just as feedback from 916, I didn't find these slides very helpful. They were squishy and, you know, the sun shines bright, but I mean, who's going there? What are they going to do? And what's the, you know what I mean? I wanted more meat.[1635.13][1635.13](Laughter) You know?
We can definitely do that as their planning gets more, more specific and progresses. So we haven't honestly had a whole lot of conversation, even in our directors' meetings, on which programs will be housed there and so forth, so that will be flushed out very soon. But yeah, that's good information to bring back.
Okay. Any other, Amy?
Um, maybe we could just, I know this topic of 916 is kind of confusing for people. It's not District 622, it's a totally separate school district, maybe you could just talk about that for a minute? So this is a school that we're part of another district too.
Great, great observation. So 622 is one of 12 districts that has a representative, and we share services. We're part, yeah, 916 is a collaboration of all these other districts, and it has four curricular areas that it serves, of which we take advantage. One is career in tech, one is special education, and we're talking advanced special education. Those would be programs that we aren't able to house within our district due to either specific student needs, or we don't have, like, deaf, hard, in hearing, something of that nature. The third one would be Valley Crossing Component, which is an independent school that is operated and run administratively by 916. And then the fourth component is professional services, of which districts can buy or use some of the services that they have, and we have used some of those services in the past. So the presentation today on the new education center is just the second phase of a three-phase program that this board agreed to participate in, as did all of the other boards that make up 916. And because it's going to be kind of in our backyard, it's a little bit more relevant to our neighboring communities, because we may have students that attend there. The second portion of which Keith presented has to do with our staff taking, getting advantage or taking advantage of getting some schooling and supplemental revenue for going to school to be special education teachers. So I hope that helps, and thank you, Amy. Nancy?
Just to tag on to that, I always think of 916 as kind of a co-op. We purchase services, you know? We belong because they have very specialized services that we, it's really... we, it's really more economical to do things in a collective way. Yeah.
Yeah, very good. Anything else? We're going to now move into our discussion section, and we have a single item, which is under Student Services. And Cory is going to walk us through that tonight. Thank you, Keith, for your assistance, by the way.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for your time on this tonight. And this is a presentation regarding a new service to students in our region, a partnership with Prairie Care. They're a University of Minnesota Medical School affiliate and partnering with 622. And here's a photo. Nancy was there. You can see her in this photo here. This was the groundbreaking from August 14th. Representative Ward and Senator Uyghur are also in this photo here. They were present with a number of many other people locally here helping break ground on the new facility. So I just wanted to give you a quick run-through of what this program's all about, in case you hear more about it. So August 14th was a groundbreaking. It is going to be a 14,000 square foot facility that'll, for our, for our purposes, house and support a partial hospitalization program. And we, because of that location in our district, by law, we're required to provide the educational piece to this psychiatric facility. So by way of review, this will be our fourth care and treatment program. We have Anthony Lewis, Fairview, and Phoenix. Those other three are primarily supporting chemical health treatment. So when adolescent children are placed, children or adolescents are placed into a chemical health treatment program, we provide the educational support for those students who come from all over the region. This one's different in that it's a psychiatric, partial hospitalization piece. So they will not be doing any chemical health services for students either of child or adolescent age. The other big difference is it does go K-12. So the other three are really serving middle school and high school students. So this is a, Prairie Care will say they're trying to capture this need of about 800,000 people in this part of the metro. There's not a regional facility like this for doing this kind of work in the east side. They also do intensive outpatient programming and inpatient services for adults, which we will not be, you know, clearly supporting. But the other locations, the Brooklyn Park, Chaska, Edinam, April, Rochester, and Woodbury sites are, are kind of capturing the other sections of the metro. This will be the first northeast metro location. They will open, trying to shoot for March, it might be April, as far as, you know, weather dependent on how quickly they can build the facility. They'll have 30 slots for students who will have acute need for stabilization when it comes to mental health and psychiatric needs. They will basically run Monday through Friday a relatively normal school day. The average treatment stay runs 16 to 18 days, give or take, because it's an intensive program by nature. Then they work to more of a lesser level of support as, as they get healthier. We will more than likely have two teachers and two paras that will support the program. There's a research-based model that they use in their programming that has been highly effective. And this is just a quick look at that. So based on that research, really targeting the social, emotional, learning needs of the students who are during their clinical care. And that really requires us to make sure we find specially-trained staff because this could be students, general education students and our students with disabilities. So we need staff with multiple licenses to be able to work with the, the students that are in the program, and the stay is very short. So that, you know, the students will be coming and going frequently through it, in and out of the program, hopefully, successfully. So that is a quick drive-by of what's coming. I don't know if there's any questions about this. And Nancy, you were there the day of the groundbreaking. Anything you'd like to add?
No, I, the need is great. It's, it's, they're just, it's a growing problem. You know, young people are being brought to, you know, far away places instead of being able to get services right in their community with their families. And, and it's, it's, this is really a super deal. Dr. Joel Oberstarr, the head psychiatrist, is a super nice guy. And he, I've heard him on a number of different occasions, and he's just, he's really very compassionate, very smart, very, very impressive head of this whole operation. So.
I've been very impressed as well. We've had a series of meetings already just doing the planning components for, for our, our role in the program. So it's, it's gone very smoothly. So, and we've actually learned from, I've actually reached out on my own just asking how things have went in the, in the other new locations and getting their suggestions for making things one, run smoothly. So we're very excited to have this option available. You know, draw students from all, a number of school districts in our region, not just ours. But we are the ones that'll be providing that, that educational component to the program. So if you have questions about this as it develops, please, please don't hesitate to contact me, and, and we'll try to answer any of those questions that people may have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Cory. We now move into our action items for the evening. We'll start with the, they're all with the business office. The first one is our acknowledgement of contributions. And Caleb, you get that on air this evening.
Thank you. Minnesota Statute 123B, Section 2 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, the Director of Business Services recommends the following resolution. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 622 that the School Board accept with appreciation the following contributions and permit their use as designated by the donors. Truist, in the amount of $42.32 for Gladstone Meals on Wheels, Krista Waymeyer, $50 to the Harmony Learning Center Pilot Program, Christina Sorio, $25 for the Welcome Back BBQ, Kim Caviaro, $25 for the District 622 Welcome Back BBQ, Steve Hunt, $25 for the District 622 Welcome Back BBQ, Becky Navy, $25 for the District 622 Welcome Back BBQ, Amy Coburn, $25 for the District 622 Welcome Back BBQ, Michelle Yenner, $25 for the District 622 Welcome Back BBQ, Teresa OJ, $25 for the District 622 Welcome Back BBQ, Nancy Livingston, $25 for the District 622 Welcome Back BBQ, and Randy Anderson, $40 for the District 622 Welcome Back BBQ, Krista Waymeyer, $50 for the Harmony Learning Center Pilot Program, and Susan Purvis, $30 for the Gladstone Meals on Wheels, the Kinney Family Foundation, $10,000 for Community Bridge, Knights of Columbus, $1,838.74 for Community Bridge, Pam Ryan, 100 new hardcover reading aloud books valued at $750 to Cowan Elementary School, and Wells Fargo Matching Gift Program, $230.76 to Castle Elementary School, and Costco Wholesale, a $25 gift card to the Richardson Art Library. So the total fiscal year 2015-2016 monetary contributions is brought to $119,410.14.
And are you moving that for approval?
Yes, I move.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Coburn. All those in favor of adopting the contributions as read, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. We've adopted them. And thank you to the generous donations of all of those that have contributed. Our next item is a resolution about the new voting system for Ramsey County. I will read the resolution. We'll look for a motion second and turn it over for any discussion or questions. Whereas Minnesota Statutes 206.58 subdivision, subdivision 1 authorizes school districts to use voting systems at their elections, subject to the approval of the county. And whereas Ramsey County has authorized the use of the Hart Vardy Voting System for the city and school district general election to be conducted on November 3rd, 2015, and all elections conducted thereafter, now therefore be it resolved that the Hart Vardy Voting System is hereby authorized for use in all elections conducted in the North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale School District on November 3rd, 2015, and thereafter. And be it further resolved that the school district clerk is directed, transmit a copy of this resolution to the Ramsey County Elections Office. And be it further resolved that the school district clerk is directed to provide information to the voters concerning the use of the new voting system. And be it further resolved that the school district clerk shall make the new voting system available for demonstration to the voters at one or more locations in this school district prior to the November 3rd, 2015 election. May I have a motion? Or second, yes, motion second.
So move.
Moved by Livingston?
Second.
Seconded by Yenner. Randy, is the mall full?
Yeah, thanks. And you have to do it again here. The, the voting equipment in Ramsey County is 15 years old, and I know that they've been looking for a couple of years to update the, the equipment and, you know, make it more computerized, et cetera. And so they were, they were pleased when, you know, we're going to have an election so that they can, you know, test their equipment. And, and it will be fully tested before, you know, they, they come forward on November 3rd and use it in our four polling places in North St. Paul. But, but yeah, so it's new equipment. It's required by statute to put this resolution in place and authorized by the School Board. So.
Okay. Questions for Randy? Just one question I have. The last, be it further resolved, it talks about the district clerk shall make it available. Is there a cost to this?
What's going to happen is there will be a user fee because this equipment is, I'm thinking it's like a million dollars. And so there will be an assessment, at least by Ramsey County, through, for counties and cities, for their county and their, their cities to use this equipment. And then we will pay a fee on an annual basis, operational fee. And that fee's about $3,000 a year. So, yep.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting the resolution as read, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. We've adopted it. Our next resolution, it just went out, if you don't mind. Whereas Minnesota Statutes 206.58 subdivision 1 authorize school districts to use voting systems at their elections, subject to the approval of the county. And whereas Washington County has authorized the use of the ESSS, DS200 voting system for the city and school district general election to be conducted on November 3rd, 2015, and all elections conducted thereafter, now therefore be it resolved that the, that the ESSSDS200 voting system is hereby authorized for use in all elections conducted in the North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale School District on November 3rd, 2015, and thereafter. And be it further resolved that the school district clerk is directed, transmit a copy of this resolution to the Washington County Elections Office. And be it further resolved that the school district clerk is directed to provide information to the voters concerning the use of the new voting system. And be it further resolved that the school district clerk shall make the new voting system available for demonstration to the voters at one or more locations in the school district prior to the November 3rd, 2015 election. May I have a motion and a second? Moved by Navy? Seconded by Anderson? All those in favor of adopt, any other comments or questions for anybody? Since it's a different system?
Again, needs to be authorized through board resolution when they update equipment in any of our, for any of our polling places.
This is kind of a joke, but where, where do people go to buy voting equipment?
Good question.
I mean, I'm, you know, I'm hearing the model number, and I'm thinking, so Washington County just goes out and gets new models.
It's interesting. They go, it takes them a while. They go through, you know, requests for proposals, and they look at all the voting. And there's more than you can, when I went to Ramsey County to, to, for kind of a preview, it was interesting to see their process. And I mean, this is a painstakingly long process because they really re, research it. And there's probably three systems that are in use in Minnesota that are real popular. And so these are two of the three. So.
Thanks. Just kind of made me giggle.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of reading the motion as read, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. We've adopted that. Last resolution under the business office is therefore the Director of Business Services recommends the following resolution. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 622 that the duties of a school district election official be fulfilled by the Executive Secretary of Business Services. May I have a motion and a second? Moved by Hunt? Seconded by Anderson? Questions or comments? You ready, Randy, in your office?
Oh, yes. Jo McCabe's done a great job. This is Jo, who will be our official, and she's done a magnificent job so far putting things together. So.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting the resolution as read, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. We have that resolution. And we have one more action item under the School Board section, and that is to set the agenda for the September 22 reflection session. The suggestions is that we have a check-in, which will include some comments from Superintendent Osorio. The MSBA Summer Session Reflections, Board Officer Succession Plan, and the 2015-16 Superintendent Goals. Is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda as read? Moved by Yenner and seconded by Hunt. All those in favor of adopting that resolution, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. We've got that. And now we come to the fun part of the meeting, and that's our board communications. Caleb, do you have anything you'd like to share this evening? Nancy?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you.
Steve?
Steve.
Michelle? Becky?
I just want to wish everyone a happy last couple of weeks of summer as we prepare to get back. And I'm, I'm going to defer to Amy. She's going to talk a little bit about the barbecue next week.
Okay. Amy?
Um, we're really excited to welcome staff back with our, I guess it would be our third annual Welcome Back BBQ. We got 800 hot dogs and buns ready to be grilled up. And board members, if you would like to volunteer that day, if you could be over at Woodland Hills about 9:30, and then we should probably be done by about 1:00. But we're going to try to serve 800 hot dogs in the span of an hour, basically. So we've got a, a big job ahead of us, but we're all ready to go and super excited about it. And we're really happy to welcome all our staff back to work. And am I missing anything with that? So we're really excited about it and can't wait to see you on Monday, or on Tuesday, the first.
Thank you, Amy, and thanks for coordinating that event. I too just want to extend a special good luck to the first day of school for all those incoming students and their new teachers and their new rooms and everything else, and hope everything is a nice transition, smooth process, and you start the year off really well. Just a reminder of future board meeting dates. We have a reflection study session set for 5:00 PM on September 22nd, followed by our regularly scheduled business meeting at 6:00 PM, also on the 22nd. That would conclude our meeting. I'm looking for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Coburn? Seconded by Becky? Okay. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. We're adjourned. And we'll move up to the Superintendent Office. Follow.